All right, good evening. We are ready to start now, sorry for the delay. Welcome to the August 7th, 2014 Board of Education meeting. Let's start off the meeting by saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just in case you're wondering, I am not Mike Sefoletto. He is at his son's rehearsal dinner tonight, so I'm filling in for him. Do we have any changes or alterations to the agenda?
No, I think we're just going to add, under three, we're going to add an oath office for Mr. Gomina. So, 3A.
Okay, and now we have visitors speaking time, and I believe we have somebody who wants to speak. Chris, could you come up and just give your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Chris Pulega. My address is 396 Coastal View Drive in Webster, New York. I have a child who is dual-enrolled with the Webster Central School District. Just wanted to come down and make a couple of really quick comments. In watching the changeover in the superintendents and following the press and the documentation that's gone with it, one of the themes that's really come across to me a couple of times is this idea of a change of direction, a change of direction for the district. Now, I haven't really been involved in the general education setting that much, so I'm probably not the best person to talk about generally the change of direction that this district may or may not need to take. I certainly, you know, have some opinions in that regard. More specifically, I think my involvement in special education and having had a special needs child in the district for the past 10 years, I think renders me able to speak with some authority as to the way that special education is handled in Webster Central School District. So, I first just want to come down here and go on the record as saying that I believe that not only do we need a change of direction in special education in this district, but they think there are deeper issues that need to be addressed. I believe there certainly needs to be a change in the culture that surrounds special education and in the leadership that we have in place that is running a special education program here in Webster. Second thing that I wanted to bring up, in one of the documents that I came across as we were changing over superintendents was the separation agreement that Ms. Bovard and the district drew up together. One of the things that struck me and actually kind of gave me a little bit of optimism was in the recital, Section B, "As a result of the changes on the Board of Education, the Board would like to explore a different direction for the district." Taking that at face value, I was really looking forward to the opportunity not only to engage with the board and with the district in trying to move a new agenda forward. I was quite surprised to read subsequent to that, a quote from Mr. Sefoletto in the Democratic Chronicle, and I know he's not here tonight, so perhaps this is something that will be addressed a little bit later, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention. He's quoted as saying, "We don't really want to change the direction of Webster's going in. We are really looking for someone who would keep the boat steady, and it appears that Carmen can do that." Now, whether or not Mr. Gomina is the right choice is certainly beyond this discussion. I'm not ready to engage in that at all. But what is striking to me is that the separation agreement was predicated on the need for change in the district, and then upon Mr. Gomina's appointment, Mr. Sefoletto goes on the record saying that we actually don't want to change the direction, that we want to keep the ship steady, that we want to continue to move in the same direction. So, I wanted to come down here and ask the board if they would put some time in considering what appears to be a paradox to me, and perhaps get back to me with some way of trying to reconcile those statements.
So noted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pulega. Have a nice evening. Okay, do we have any liaisons to the board this evening? I don't think so. Okay. I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Gomina for serving as our interim superintendent. Mr. Gomina is a lifelong resident of Webster and has been with our district for 25 years. He has served as a teacher for 11 of those years and was named the Disney American Teacher of the Year in Biology. He served as our Assistant Principal and Principal of State Road School for seven years, and since 2009, and nine has served as our Deputy Superintendent. Carmen's experience in Webster, as well as his vested interest in the community and our school district, will serve our students well, and we really appreciate your filling in for us.
Thank you, Sue.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, it's certainly, just briefly, it is an honor to be here and to serve in this capacity. It is, again, it's my hometown, and this is a position that I know that I can continue to serve our students and serve the board and serve our community. I'm looking forward to working with the board and also the administrative team and the teachers, as well as all of our staff, in a collaborative way. And again, I think it's, I think our core beliefs of students first and taking risks and not fearing failure is something that's really important, and it's near and dear to my heart. And it's also wonderful to be able to work so closely with Mr. Fashara and Mr. Neenan and Mrs. Kahoon, who share that belief that success is not just measured with test scores and rankings, it's measured in the emotional and social and physical health of our kids as well. So, I'm looking forward to continuing our service.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have to stand for your oath. All that you have to do is say, "I do," at the end.
Okay.
"I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools, Webster Central School District, according to the best of my ability."
I do.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to board business. Mr. Fashara, you are up for quite a while now.
Yes, the first item is tax rates, and you have a packet in front of you, and we'll just quickly go through some of the exhibits. On the back page, you'll see the comparison of tax rates from the May estimate. Back in May, we estimated the tax rates would increase by 1.67 percent. The good news, due to changes in equalization rates, due to changes in assessed values, the property tax levy will remain the same, but the tax rates will have gone down, so that 1.67 that we projected now will be in Webster, a .22 percent, so less than a quarter percent increase. In the town of Penfield, they will decrease by .9 percent, and in the towns of Walworth and Ontario, they will decrease by just about 1 percent. So, you have those numbers, and they will be published, sized in the next newsletter, and we'll be using these as the final rates pending board approval tonight. The next exhibit is the tax computation, and you can see where these numbers come from, so we won't go through those. And the next exhibit is the final revenues that the board will be approving tonight along with the budget that was approved by the community. The following exhibit is, will be Exhibit 5, and you may recall this back, well, actually, I take that back, Exhibit 6, let's look at first, and those were the transfers that the board approved back in June. At that time, the board approved recommendations, estimated transfer to the capital reserve of $700,000, an estimated transfer to the tax surstrary reserve of $300,000 in the liability reserve. We are going to reduce that down to $150,000, as that reserve is no longer needed, and transfer that balance of $3.5 million to the retirement contribution reserve. And then you had information on the unemployment reserve, which will be using $140,000 from that reserve as a revenue in this year's budget. And the last one was the $2.6 million that we'll be using as a revenue from the retirement contribution reserve, an estimated transfer at that point of $1 million, and a transfer from the liability reserve of $3.5 million. So, now if we go back to Exhibit 5, these are the transfers that I'd be recommending this year for board approval, and they would be the final transfers. Those numbers that I just spoke about are listed under the column under June approved estimates. The final approval, I would recommend that the board consider the following. The capital reserve, transferring $1 million into the capital reserve. In the tax cert reserve, $450,000. Again, the unemployment reserve will remain the same at 140. We'll transfer $3.5 million into the retirement contribution reserve. $2.6 million will come out of that to be used as a revenue this year, and I'm recommending no transfer, no other transfer into that reserve. The retirement contribution reserve will have about $8.5 million in it with these transfers, which should carry you for the next four or five years at the rates that we have set in our long-range plan. And the last transfer is the liability reserve, reducing that one by the $3.5 million, moving it to the retirement contribution reserve. And if we go to the last page, you'll have the 14, 15 final tax rates in Webster, $23.51 in Penfield, $21.16 in Walworth and Ontario, $21.50. I would recommend to the board that they approve the following tax rates, the transfers and the revenues, and execute the necessary warrants. And I would be happy to answer any questions on any of those exhibits that the board might have.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Fritz? I don't either. Okay, can we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Fritz, in a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. I'm sorry? Yes, we should. Yes. So, motion carries, 4-0.
Okay, I'm going to just pass around the two. The board has to just sign, there's lines on the bottom, you can just sign on each one, there's two of them.
Okay.
I'll pass around the black pen, too, so that we're consistent. Thank you.
So, while we're signing this, you want to make a couple of comments about the tax rates?
So, Jim, as we look at these tax rates, we had expected an increase of 1.67 across the board.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
And in actuality, we have just approved an actual decrease in taxes for Penfield, Walworth, and Ontario, and a .22 percent, so less than, less than a half a percent for Webster. Went from 1.67 down to .22.
That's correct.
So, essentially, we have, you know, many of our, many of our taxpayers and our families in Penfield, Walworth, and Ontario will see a decrease in their tax rate, or their tax bill, perhaps, correct?
As long as their assessment remains the same.
Assessment remain the same from 2013, 14, okay. And Webster's is, again, it's essentially flat, and I think it ends up being on an average, less than, okay, less than a quarter percent.
On an average, less than $5, about $5 on a average home.
$5 on an average.
Or $170,000.
So, that'll be the increase for the whole year.
Yes. It's 5 cents, I'm sorry, it's 5 cents per thousand.
5 cents per thousand.
So...
So, about $10 on a $200,000 home.
Yes, yes.
$10.
On an average home of $160 to $170,000, it'll be about $10.
Okay, okay.
That's excellent.
Wow.
We could have asked for anything better than that.
We're in Webster, our life is worth living. It feels good to see town taxes low and school taxes low, and as far as the increases this year, it's been great, so pretty happy with that.
And Jim, just one last thing. Our tax cap was, and obviously, we're well below that because we're under a quarter of a percentage, but the 1.6...oh, okay, well...
We are at our property tax cap.
Oh, at a property tax cap.
Okay.
Right.
And predominantly, the tax rate changed because of a large, of a large increase in assessment in Penfield.
Okay.
Almost 7 percent. The equalization rate in Webster did decrease 1 percent.
Okay.
Had that not decreased, we probably would have seen a decrease across all four.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Jim, you're still on with authorization of the issuance of debt?
Okay, the second piece is the authorization issuance of debt for the school buses that were approved in May. The amount of borrowing is $1.4 million. This does require a roll call vote, and this will allow us to borrow the money to pay for the buses.
Are there any questions? No? Okay, can we have a motion? Ann and Mike? And do you want to do the roll call vote?
Okay, Ann?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, Cindy. And Jim?
Next, you have the treasures report, and this is for the month of June, closes out our school year, and our total receipts for the month of June were just over $9 million, with about six, a little over $6 million coming from state aid and BOSI's aid, and over a million dollars coming from public access cost and tuition aid. That was really the bulk of the money, that was about almost $7.5 million. The balance of it came from transfers as we got federal funds in, we were able to transfer back from the borrowings that the federal account has to do from the general during the year until we get that money from the federal. So, in June, we had just over $43 million in balances in our checking accounts and reserves. On Page 2, you'll see the balances of school lunch, federal, the capital, and trust and agency, and we'll just take a look at Page 3, and there you'll find our investments, and at the end of June, we had just over $45 million invested, in some cases around .2 percent, so .15 to .2 percent on our major accounts.
Is there any, projected to be any movement on that?
I don't believe that you'll see these rates go much beyond a half a percent, maybe in the next 12 months. There has been talk of some change, but it changes very slow when they're going up.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions about the treasures report? No? Motion? Ann, Fritz, Chris? All in favor of accepting the treasures report? Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. 4-0, thank you. If you want to say anything about any of this, jump in. Okay. It's just routine. Okay, the next, we have the contractors' report, or, excuse me, agreement?
Yes, the next one is the SEI architect contract, and this will be for the capital project that was approved in May. The final contract was approved by our attorney at the end of July. The contract is about an 18-month contract for the architectural drawings, and again, as scheduled, this will be in like a two-tier submission to the state. We'll be submitting all of the roofs in the first submission, and then the balance of the work probably a month later in a second submission. And the reason for that is we want to get the roofs out for bid as soon as possible, and they will start right when school ends, so hopefully, the setup could be in June, and then they'll start the roofs in July and August and finish up and hopefully in September and do their balance of their minor work. But the main part of the roofing project will happen over the summer, and the other interior work can happen when school is in session, so that's why they'll be working on that piece in about a month timeline later. The board did receive a timeline of this about two weeks ago. I will, well, the next time we meet with both SEI and the next contract for campus construction, any updates, I'll get out to the board. So, this contract calls for a fee for services of about 6.75 percent, or about $750,000, and that was in line with what the estimates were back in January when the board approved the project for architectural services.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there any questions? No? Okay. Can we have a motion to accept the architect agreement? Mike and Fritz, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All set, 4-0. Okay, I think Shelley, you're next with the code of conduct.
No, we have one more.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
We have the campus.
Oh, SEI, I'm sorry, Shelley. There was two on there that I didn't see.
So, the second contract is the contract between the district and campus construction management group. We have used them for the previous three projects, they've done a great job for us. This contract also was approved by our attorney in late July. It's for construction services, and they will be like our clerk of the work, so they will manage the project, make sure the contractors are doing what the architect has designed, make sure the work is being done properly. The total fee for this service is 2.96 percent, or $329,500, and it is under what we projected back in January for the fees for this service. And again, this will go on for about 18 months until the project's done.
Okay, any questions? This contract. Mike, you look like you have a question. No questions, all right? Can we have a motion, please? Fritz and Ann? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No abstentions, 4-0. Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Now Shelley.
So, as required annually, the Board of Education must review the code of conduct, and the code of conduct this year was amended to include an enhanced visitor management procedure, and this was really the outcome of the safety committee that was led by Neil Flood. So, the changes specifically are that all visitors must report to the main office upon arrival to school. They will be required to produce an official photo identification, and will be issued a visitor's identification badge, which must be worn at all times while in the school or on school grounds. If the visitor does not have the official photo identification, a building administrator must authorize the visit, and then the visitor must return the identification badge to the main office before leaving. This, again, was the outcome of the safety committee that was led by Neil. There were many, many people within the community and within the district that participated to recommend the changes.
And that's the only change to the code?
And that was the only change to the code for this year.
Okay.
Any questions about...okay?
Hi, I understand that the committee, that the safety committee reviewed these procedures. The actual code itself, just so people are aware, it undergoes review every year, and who basically organizes that or leads that review?
Well, it really is now the work of the building care teams, because they review the code of conduct and how it applies to the buildings overall, and we have created documentation for each building to be able to share the expectations with our students and with our parents. We have created little documents for the parents and the students to receive at the beginning of the year, and the principals go into the classrooms and share the information with the students specifically. So, it really, again, is the work of our care teams in looking at the code of conduct, reviewing it, and determining if any changes need to be made.
And every building has a care team?
They do. All 11 buildings.
Yes. Great. All right. Does anybody have any, does anybody have any questions for Shelley? No? Did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. Can we have a motion, then, to accept this change to the code of, well, to accept this change and to adapt the code of conduct for the year? Okay, Ann and Fritz, all in favor? All right. Any nays? Any objections? No? Okay, motion carries, 4-0.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
I think you have one more, the Medicaid document.
Right, the Medicaid compliance document, like our code of conduct, every year, the Board of Education must review our Medicaid compliance plan. We are a district that is, we are required to have the Medicaid compliance plan, and there, again, there are no changes to our compliance plan, but I think it's also good to note that, helpful to note, that in March, we had an external audit. It was conducted by the State of New York Office of Medicaid Inspector General, and the audit examined our documentation of 100 claims between January 1st, 2013, and December 31st, 2013, and I am extremely proud to say that there were identified no concerns, and that they also said that our compliance plan can be carried forward without any changes. Again, I want to note, just, it's extremely important for us to have very clear process and procedures in line for our Medicaid billing and just the Medicaid processing, and I really need to give kudos to Kim Ganley and her team, which, speech and language therapists, occupational therapists, our nurses. Kim really works very hard to make sure that the compliance plan is followed, that everyone understands what the expectations are, and then the paperwork has to be thoroughly reviewed before we submit any billing. So, again, I'm very proud of the work that we've done, and that there were no concerns.
Does anybody have any questions for Shelley?
Yeah, but that is great, and thank you for that internship. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how many claims do we do a year?
Well, that was just an audit of 100, about 250.
We do about 250? So, they, they audit a third of our claims, basically?
Yes, right.
About, okay. Excellent. Excellent. Did you have any questions, Fritz? Okay. Can we have a motion? Can we have a motion? Mike?
One second.
Fritz? There's not a lot of options here.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay, next on the agenda is the adoption of the board goals. And since there are no changes to the board goals, other than that they're now called the 1415 district goals, I should say district goals, I'm sorry. Since that's the only change, is the year on there, does anybody have any questions or comments? Can we have a motion to adopt the district goals for 1415, then, please?
Certainly.
Ann? Mike? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries four zero. You've all had the opportunity to review the consent agenda, and we are, we have the opportunity to vote on everything at once, so if there are no questions or comments, which I believe you would have asked ahead of time, then can we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Ann and Fritz? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No abstentions? Motion carries four zero. Future board meetings, our next workshop meeting is going to be August 21st at 5:00, 5 to 9 on a Thursday evening, and then our next regular board meeting is September 4th.
And lastly, just want to remind parents that children go back to school on Tuesday, September, it's the Tuesday after Labor Day, it's not Wednesday. We started that last year, we came back to school on Tuesday, so...
It's the 2nd.
It is the 2nd, so Tuesday, the 2nd. Thanks, can't wait to see them.
So this meeting is, do we need a motion to adjourn? I forgot.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, can you have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Mike and Fritz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a nice evening.